Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the April 8th, 2025 Disability Issues Advisory Board Meeting. I am Teresa Smith, Advisory Board Vice Chair. Thank you all for joining us today. For those who are unable to observe now, the meeting is being recorded and can be accessed on the PGCPS YouTube channel for later viewing. The time is now 6:11. I'm sorry, guys, I missed the whole part of this. The time is now 6:11. And Ms. Johnson, if you have not already, can you please start the recording?
No, we're live.
Oh, great. Okay, thank you. Ms. Vickery, can you please take the roll call?
Sorry about that, guys. It was on mute. Where are we at? Here we go. Ms. Amaya. Ms. Blackwell. Ms. Bowman.
Present.
Ms. Byrne.
Present.
Ms. Dorsey.
Present.
Ms. Doyle.
Here.
Mr. Jongo. Ms. Katrell. Ms. Payne.
Present.
Ms. Patrick.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Present.
Ms. Vickery, present. And Ms. Wingate Robinson.
Present.
Vice Chair, we have a total of nine present. We have met four.
Excellent. With four present, the Disability Issues Advisory Board meeting will come to order. Agenda item 2.2, adoption of the agenda. If there are no objections, the advisory board shall adopt the April 8th, 2025 meeting agenda. I'm sorry, I need to get some clarity. Ms. Johnson, do we have to take a vote for this?
No.
Okay.
Someone objects.
Gotcha. There being no objections, the April 8th, 2025 meeting agenda is adopted. Item 3.0, approval of minutes. If there are no corrections, the advisory board shall approve the March 18th, 2025 meeting minutes as distributed. There being no corrections, the March 18th, 2025 meeting minutes are approved. Is Stephanie here? Yeah, do we know?
No, I haven't seen her. I did send her the link, so she may still be having some technical issues. I'm gonna try to reach out to her again.
So before you reach out to her, just to get some clarity, because I don't have, the next agenda item is the report of the chair. And I'm not sure what she was planning to report out on, so is, can I make a recommendation that we hold this agenda item for now?
Yeah, we can do that. Or I guess if you want to strike it from, from the agenda, because she's not here. And we can, I guess, put it back on for the, the next one. Whatever she had to say, she can say at the next meeting. If she had anything to discuss.
Vice Chair, do we need to take a motion for that and a vote?
I think that we do, since we had posted the agenda. So could somebody, could somebody put a motion on the floor?
Or you can make it.
Oh, great. Okay, I move. Okay, thank you. I move that we strike the report of the chair from the March, I mean, the April 8th, 2025 meeting agenda. Is there any discussion? Well, is there, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So it's been properly moved and seconded that we strike the report of the chair from the April 8th, 2025 meeting agenda. Is there any discussion?
Vice Chair, I'm sorry, who was the second? I was looking at my other screen and missed that.
Sure, it was Ms. Bowman.
Thank you.
Hearing no discussion, is there any objections? All right, since there is no objections, I guess I could just, can I just, okay, the motion is adopted. Thank you. All right, we moving right along. Item 5.0, report of subcommittees. The chair recognizes the advisory board's subcommittee leads for their committee reports. I will start off. Because I need a moment.
I'm sorry, Vice Chair, if I, if I may, I'm sorry. So Brittany Patrick is gonna be absent this evening. So I don't know if there's, if someone else from her subcommittee, if they have any updates to provide, if they would want to give them, or if not, then well, we could proceed to the next subcommittee.
Ms. Johnson.
Oh, she's here. Oh, I'm sorry. There she is.
How you doing, Ms. Johnson? Yes, I'm here, and I've asked Ms. Smith to provide the update on my behalf. Ms. Smith, I have also updated the shared document with appropriate motions.
All right, guys, I need to switch, I need to switch screens here. It's good to be able to adapt to the changes that, that, that ends up happening. So the board policy 1700, working, working subgroup committee convened twice, March 27th and March 30th. We discussed, and we also developed recommendations, and we have some proposed revisions to this policy document. As a result of those meetings, we created a comprehensive narrative document that outlines eight total recommendations. Each recommendation includes a rationale statement and proposed policy language to support the suggested change. In addition to the narrative, we also prepared a track changes version of the current policy. This version highlights exactly where and how our proposed recommendations would modify the existing text. Within the narrative document currently uploaded in the DIAB folder on the Google Drive, we have also identified five related requests to further support the revision process for board policy 1700. I will now go through those five items. The first one is that we want to request the creation of a hyperlinked list of standard operating procedures, regulations, resolutions, policies, and administrative procedures that directly relate to individuals with disabilities within the district. Second, we would like to schedule a follow-up meeting with Dr. Moss to formally present our recommendations and explore options for raising them directly with the Policy and Governance Committee. Third, we recommend that Dr. Moss ensure that the Disability, Inclusion, and Accessibility Board policy is incorporated into the formal policy review dashboard and timeline for this year. Fourth, we would like to address delays in responses to DIAB's data collection requests as timely access to data is essential to our work. And then finally, we request that the board consider developing and distributing an internal ADA survey to its staff. This will help us identify and prioritize areas of need related to ADA compliance and accessibility and inform the direction of the board's work moving forward. That's the conclusion of Board Policy 1700's report. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Ms. Patrick, just for a little clarity, did we want to show the revisions this evening?
Yes, and Ms. Smith, I just forwarded to you the updated, like, motion language. Share that. But it is also in the shared folder for, on the DIAB group.
Vice Chair, can I ask a question to Brittany? So Brittany, I'm sorry, can you clarify if these were motions you were sharing, or just?
So the, are you asking about, so what I just read out, are you asking, were those the motions?
Yeah, because I thought I heard someone mentioned something about they were, okay.
No, so there, those, that was just the report, but we, yeah, we have motion language. And that's kind of why I was asking, did we want to share the document? But I guess, is it appropriate now for us to put the motions on the floor? And then also, I see Ms. Blackwell is here. Do we want to shift who's leading the meeting?
No, Ms. Smith, you can continue to run the meeting. You have already started, so we keep you in place.
So if I continue to run the meeting, but I'm also, Ms. Johnson, I need some clarity. If I continue to run the meeting and I have these motions because I'm presenting the committee's report, how would this work?
No, you can still continue to, to lead the, the meeting. Really, anyone can make a motion. You can make a motion. Well, so in this case, I guess I'm trying to clarify if these were motions, because if they were, then.
I, I haven't presented the motion.
You haven't, okay. I got it, okay. No, no, but you can, you can continue, it's fine. And you can also, when you get to the motions, you can do that as well.
Okay. Ms. Vickery, I see your hand.
Yes, thank you. It was my understanding that the motions were for the main board and not necessarily DIAB. Is that correct?
So the motion, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, Ms. Johnson. So before anything goes beyond DIAB, we have, as subcommittees, we have to bring all of that information back here. And then as a group, we will decide what moves forward from there. So some of these items, or if not all, will require a vote. So I really think it depends upon about the discussion that may come from an item from each subcommittee. But before we take anything outside of this board, we all have to discuss it and then determine what should, you know, what should move forward. Ms. Bowman?
I just had a question about the, the recommended revisions that we want to, that the subcommittee wants to present to Board Member Moss. Will we have an opportunity as an entire group to look at those revisions? And react to them, and maybe, and I'm just wondering if we should delay any type of motion tonight? To the full committee has an opportunity to look at what the revisions are? To see if we have any feedback or revisions to them? That's just, I think, a question for the group, not a motion, but for discussion.
I think it's an excellent question. I will say that the document is posted on Google Docs, so it's definitely available for everyone to review. I'm not opposed to holding off presenting the motions tonight until everybody can look at the document and react to it. Ms. Patrick, because you are our lead for this subcommittee, would you like to give any feedback there?
Yes, I would, I would like to suggest we hold off on motions, because we have eight total recommendations that I would like for people to have a chance to review in more detail.
Okay, great. Ms. Bowman, thank you so much for posing that question. So we would definitely, we'll hold off on the motions for tonight. And what I'll do, along with Ms. Blackwell, is try to get a date out for everybody to review the document by, so that it'd give the subcommittee an opportunity to, you know, if there are any changes, it'd give the subcommittee some time to digest that information and modify the comments or the suggested change if necessary. So, so basically, be on the lookout for a date for you guys to review the document by. All right, so let me, since we're gonna hold off, let me get back to the agenda. I believe the next subcommittee, the next subcommittee is New School Construction and Accessibility. Oh, actually, is there any other questions before I move on? Any other questions about board policy 1700's feedback? Ms. Byrne?
Hi there. This is not a substantive question. It's more, so, so, so you're gonna send out what we worked on for folks to review. And then at the next meeting, we are going to discuss it versus reviewing now together, and then folks eyeballing. And I just, I don't want stuff to get lost in time. But I understand certainly the value in reading this stuff beforehand and then discussing. So I'm, I'm flexible, not physically, but I'm flexible here.
Understood. Another great question. I am a person that, that likes to digest information. If the group would like us to pull the document up, by all means, I can. But I was, I think I was of the, the mindset that we would leave this meeting today with the understanding that we would read it on our own time, and a due date will be provided by Ms. Blackwell, so that the subcommittee itself could digest any commentary and then come back, yes, by the next DIAB meeting to present our motions. Our motions may not even change based on the feedback, but it may, they may also change. So that's, that's what I was thinking.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson, I think this might be you. I'm not certain.
No, this is Cindy. Hi. So I just wanted to address one of your recommendations. I know you guys mentioned having the policy be added to this year's work plan. I would be honest with you and let you know, it won't happen. The earliest we might probably get it is next school year, which is the SY 2526. Because the policies, because I support the Policy and Governance Committee, and the policies we have right now, we are not even sure we're gonna cover it by June. So trying to add another one, I'm be honest, it wouldn't get done before June. Yep.
May I ask a follow-up there, Cindy?
Sure.
I don't know how the selection process works. But, but just hearing, like, even the ones that have already been identified this school year, all of them may not be accounted for in this review cycle. Do they get pushed to the next school year? And like, if, if the recommendation, if the motion was to move forward, would we, you know, possibly be up against it, it not being considered for the next school year just because of the, the current workload?
Answer the first part, yes, these policies are usually pushed to the next school year. But the good thing is, the Policy and Governance Committee already have policy 1700 on the list for next school year. Because I've been pulling a few of them to share with the Office of Governance, Policy and Governance. So that's one of the policies we did include on the list. So if you guys could share your recommendations prior to July 1st, I could have it shared with the department, so they could take into consideration your recommendations to start incorporating that into their revisions. I think you're on mute. You are mute, Ms. Smith.
Oh, my goodness. So I was just saying that that was really good feedback to hear, and we will modify our motion just based on some of that, that knowledge that you, that you, that you were able to share with us. So thank you for that. Ms. Vickery?
Yes, I wanted to actually make a motion for us, or at least ask if we could set a date that we can come back together for a discussion versus waiting for our next monthly meeting? Maybe if we can add a date to the calendar now?
So motion on the floor, so I actually can't say nothing yet. Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Is there any discussion? Yes, Ms. Payne?
So what would be the purpose of the, this meeting in between our next meeting? So I'll clear.
Just to discuss the recommendations from the Subcommittee for Board Policy 1700. There are several recommendations and then several language changes. So I do believe that there will be a lot of discussion around that. And I'm not sure we should delay, especially after what we heard around getting before that July 1st deadline.
So Ms. Vickery, I know you wanna, you would like a date selected, identified, that's what I'm looking for. You would like a date, date identified. I'm a little hesitant with us selecting a date before we hear the reports of the other subcommittees? In case this needs to be, in case there needs to be just another additional DIAB meeting put on the books to discuss anything else, maybe not just for board policy 1700.
I can understand that. So I can withdraw my motion and wait for the rest of the subcommittee reports? And then I can re-present my motion if, if I feel like I still feel that same way.
Gotcha. Let me just ask, Ms. Cindy, can you help me with your last name? Let me start there. Thank you. Does she have to withdraw the motion right now?
So what was her motion?
So her motion was to select, identify, for us to identify a date to reconvene in order to discuss the recommendations from the Board Policy 1700 Subcommittee. And then, in, in discussion, there, there, there's a concern that we haven't heard from the other committees with their reports. And we, you know, it may, that, that, identifying that date may not only be for board policy 1700 Subcommittee's recommendations.
Got it. So is it the will of the committee to hear all the subcommittees and then make a motion on the policy?
Yeah, so maybe the motion could be modified.
No, I'm asking, so if you guys want to hear from all the subcommittees, yes, you'll have to withdraw her motion and make it at the end.
Gotcha. Okay, so I guess that's the question. Would you guys, before we move forward with this motion, would you all like to hear from the other two subcommittees? Or maybe the question is, are there any objections with us hearing from the other two subcommittees? Hearing none. So Ms. Vickery, would you be okay to withdraw your motion?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. I've never dealt with a withdrawn motion. So do I just state that the motion has been withdrawn?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion has been properly withdrawn, and we will move forward with item 5.2, New School Construction and Accessibility of, Accessibility of Building and Facilities. Ms. Bowman?
Thank you so much, Vice Chair. So we met on April 2nd for our first subcommittee meeting. As part of our committee, we reviewed a variety of resource documents that included administrative procedures related to facilities planning, requesting building alterations and improvement. AP 7100, which is our capital improvement program, the Facilities Advisory Committee, boundary changes, the capital improvement program, as well as the website. So those were just resources that we had as part of our subcommittee in terms of looking to those documents for guidance as we look at our work. We did a deeper dive around Administrative Procedure 2505, which is facilities planning for students with disabilities. And this particular administrative procedure talks about the expectations and the procedures that must be followed as we consider and expand programs across the districts for students with disabilities. That includes looking at accessibility. The other item we reviewed during our subcommittee was just providing an overview of the Prince George's County Public Schools Guidelines for Determining Building Accessibility for Students with Physical Disabilities. And the premise around this overview was to demonstrate or illustrate that every school across our district has an accessibility review that is done every three years by our physical therapists in the Department of Special Education, who are really our resident experts on ADA compliance in facilities and buildings. And so during our overview of our buildings, we look at everything from, does a school have ramps? If there's a multi-tiered school, is the elevator there? Is it working? They look at the cafeteria. They look at the stage, they look at bathrooms, they look at the layout of the building, a variety of indicators that they look at around building accessibility. And then every school is then marked for those particular ADA areas for accessibility, and then uploaded to a data dashboard that then we can go in and look at. This is also important. As you know, many of our schools in Prince George's County was built before the ADA regulations went into effect in 1990. As you know, we have some of the oldest schools in Prince George's County. And so as we look at funding to look at accessibility of our buildings, those are priorities that we look at as part of that rolling database to bring our schools up to ADA guidelines. And so we did a deep dive and kind of looking at the form. And then we also went over the internal guidelines that we follow. If a neighborhood school is not accessible, there is a process that we follow to ensure that we can get a student to the next accessible building if their neighborhood school is not accessible. So we work hand in hand with building services, because sometimes it's minor updates that can be made to a school in order to make it accessible, or we have to do major renovations. So we kind of went through that process in terms of what we do around accessibility. We also reviewed the questions that had been submitted from various subcommittee members around building accessibility and new construction. And so those questions have been compiled, and I'm in the process of reaching out to the various experts and offices to respond to those questions, which we then can review at our next subcommittee meeting, which is tentatively scheduled for April 28th at 5:30. And so that concludes the subcommittee report for New School Construction and Building Accessibility.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Are there any questions? Ms. Blackwell?
Oh, I have a question. With the accessibility to the building, that counts as also outside to maybe if a student who's in a wheelchair who wants to go to a game, attend a game?
Yes, so they also look at, thank you for bringing that up. They also look at playground structures, access to the building and those areas, fields, playgrounds, et cetera. So that is part of the accessibility review that they do sidewalks. They look at all that, because we have to make sure that we have an area of a student is in a wheelchair to be able to have a cutout for them to get onto the sidewalk from a bus or from a car. So they look at all that, internal, internal structures and external.
Okay. I did visit one school so far. And I spoke to personnel who takes care of the grounds in the county. A meeting with District One Board Representative, either on the 10th of this month or the 28th, to check the field at one of our local high schools, who, where the field was. to check the field at one of our local high schools who, where the field was not in good condition. Um, so I did check the bleachers and I could tell that a new sidewalk was added for accessibility for wheelchair to get to the field, but then if they want to get closer to the bleachers, they were not in good condition as well. So I report that back to your committee, si- since you all meet during the time that I'm not able to meet. So I report that back to you in the committee.
Yep, and if you could provide the name of the school, so that's something that we can have building services follow up with as well.
Yes, I will.
You can send me that in an email. Yes.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Well, Ms. Black, Ms., um, Bowman, thank you so much for your report. We will now move to item five point three, employment and hiring.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. So the Employment and Hiring Subcommittee, we've had two meetings since our last D I A B meeting, one on March twenty second and the other on April fifth. Um, we have been, uh, just crystallizing the areas that we would like to make recommendations to the D I A B for. Um, and that includes the request for data that we made at the last meeting. We're still waiting for that request and then identifying subject matter experts in what we are describing as best practice schools who can share with us information that might help to shape our recommendations. Um, we've agreed on the recommendation areas, uh, being the need for training for paraprofessionals and one-on-one aides, the dedicated aides, the importance of benefits, um, for those positions, how the existing Prince George's County Public School Policy can be leveraged to increase parent volunteerism and quantifying a timeline for responses for reasonable accommodation requests and the report requirements for administrative procedure four one seven two. Um, in our last meeting, uh, we were able to, um, get data around reasonable accommodation requests, which gave us the length of time in terms of response and whether those cases were still open and closed and whatever, um, which raised some concern. So that's the new, um, area that we want to provide a recommendation for. We have also scheduled a meeting with, um, the Prince George's County, um, Head of Human Resources, Dr. Baldwin. That meeting is to be scheduled on this Friday. So, uh, we've scheduled that and we have, um, been in contact um, with Dr. Baldwin and, uh, set an agenda, uh, for that meeting. And our plan is to complete all of our recommendations and present to the D I A B in May. So, uh, for our timeline, we would not have any recommendations until May, a May meeting. And that concludes, uh, our report.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. Are there any questions? So Ms. Payne, I have a question for you and then Ms., Ms., um, Brown, I have a question for you. Um, Ms. Payne, help me understand and it, and just bear with me, cause I'm, I'm thinking on the fly here. Um, you mentioned that you guys wanna leverage the policy for volunteerism. Help me understand, um, I guess in my mind, i- it seems like we, we have a, we have a process in place for individuals to volunteer with the district. But it sounds like we may have a concern that there's a gap in that process. Is that what I'm understanding?
I think it's twofold. I think having parents who feel like they'd like to volunteer and haven't been able to. Um, it, volunteerism is more prominent in some schools than others and how volunteers might support some of the resource gaps that schools might have. So I think it's, you know, looking at it from, from both angles.
Understood. Okay, thank you so much for that clarity. Um, Ms. Brown, I know that, um, we had presented a question about when th- this board is required to re, to do its report. I don't know if you have an update there, um, based on the language that's currently written in the policy. And the reason why I'm posing the question here, um, um, is because of the context of when we need to have these recommendations reviewed, um, and the motions put on the floor for the board, um, in case we need to, um, do a annual report before the end of this school year. So I'm just kind of thinking, that was a lot. I'm, I'm, I'm thinking out loud, but I guess I just need to know when is this board required to report out? So that I know, or that we know what timeline we are up against.
Um, so that's a great question. I did pose the question. I don't believe I got a response back. Um, once I do get a response back, Teresa, I'll, I'll definitely make sure that I share it with you and I, um, send it over to you for sure.
Okay, great. So Ms. Payne, just, just knowing that, just in case I, you know, Ms. Blackwell or myself may need to ping the subcommittees, um, just in, I just want, I just want us to know in case we need to, um, move forward with our, with our recommendations a lot sooner than expected. Um, and that's it. Are there any other questions or discussions for the subcommittees? Actually, there is another one for me. This is for the Board Member's Office, cause this, this, um, the data request that Ms. Payne brought up that, um, they shared their data request and, and, um, Board Policy seventeen hundred, the request for data came up. And we know as individuals, there are other ways that we can get data. Um, so I guess the question is, when we make a request to the Board Member's Office, what is the turnaround time with receiving data? If someone's talking, they may be on mute.
I'm sorry, Teresa. Who was the question for exactly?
It was for the Board Member's Office. So Ms. Johnson or Ms., um, Cindy, I forgot her last name already. I'm sorry.
Yeah, Adeline.
Adeline.
I'll wait for a few minutes. Can you repeat the question?
Sure, no problem. So for this board, when we make data requests to, um, your office, what's the turnaround time? And the reason why we're asking this question is because we know that there are other avenues to access data, but we don't wanna have to explore those if we, if it's, if we don't have to. So we just wanna know, what does that timeframe looks like when we request the data through the Board Member's Office?
Are you requesting data like on, from the school? I'm trying to figure.
So it could, it, it could be from directly from the board or that data could actually be coming from the schoolhouse as well. I know, um, with Board Policy seventeen hundred, um, you're gonna, you guys will get a formal request from us soon, presented here tonight, but we, we have a request outlining, um, policies that are in place. Um, and if it's a board policy, we know that the board would probably be the one to respond to that. Um, but there may be data, I, I'm sure, or Ms. Payne, I didn't look at her data requests in detail, but I'm sure her, because of her Subcommittee type, that data request has to come, or has to be fulfilled on the administrative side. So.
Got it. So typically, um, the PGCPS standard is that we have forty-eight hours to respond. So if anything goes past forty-eight hours, you could pretty much nurture us. But any request that comes out of the committee has to come through Board Member Brown, cause she's the board liaison. So, um, so pretty much the committee kind of reach out to the board directly. It has to go through Board Member Brown. And she would make the request on your behalf.
So do we, so is, as far as operationally, do we just send the email to Ms. Johnson and then that's it for D I A B and you guys will handle it from there?
No, the email should go to Board Member Brown.
Okay, all right. So Ms. Brown? So actually, so on the record, um, an email, I think, was addressed to Ms. Johnson. So what I'm hearing tonight, it should be addressed to you. So Ms. Payne, this may be the, the reason of the delay with getting your initial request fulfilled. So, um, I'll work with Ms. Blackwell to make sure that we route that to Ms. Brown and go from there. Ms. Patrick?
Hi, I'm just gonna excuse myself for the night. Sorry about that, but thank you.
Okay, thanks. No problem. Um, and then Ms. Brown, I, um, we're gonna have a data request from Board Policy seventeen hundred Subcommittee as well. So we'll make sure that, that all of that information comes over to you. Is there any other discussion? All right, hearing none. Item six point O, new business.
Um, Vice Chair, I just wanna recognize for the, uh, record and the minutes that we still remain in quorum, although Ms. Patrick left. Sorry.
Are we, are we still?
We are. I just wanted to recognize that for the, um, for the minutes.
Okay, great. Thank you. And actually,
uh, Ms. Smith, you went on, you went on mute.
Whoops. Um, I was stating that you, you had a motion that you wanted to bring back to the floor.
No, I, I remain withdrawn.
Oh, okay. All right. So we'll, um, we'll, I'll work, the Executive Board will work together to identify a date for everyone to review any information that's coming from the subcommittees. Um, ideally, all of that documentation is going to be stored on the Google Drive. Um, and we just request that you guys adhere to the, the specified timeframe so that that'll allow the subcommittees to reconvene, um, and review any information that comes out of you all's review. All right, six point O, new business. The two thousand twelve annual report review. Hmm, okay. So I know that I sent this document out and I guess we just wanna thank everybody for reviewing that report. Um, the insights from this report may serve as a valuable reference for compiling the D I A B twenty twenty-five annual report to the board in June. So although this is written like this, we still don't know if we are reporting out in June, um, based on the earlier discussion. Um, so if you all had an opportunity to review it, are there any questions, concerns, any feedback related to that report?
May I, may I ask, does anyone know what came of this report? Were any actions undertaken subsequent to its delivery? I know it was quite some time ago, but I'm just curious to get a sense of what like realistically our, our mission and possible accomplishments might be given past performance.
Great question, Ms. Byrne. Um, Ms. Johnson, I know that, that it's been like a wild goose chase to try to track down, um, previous documentation related to this board. Do you, do you have any feedback there?
Um, unfortunately, I do not, but I will say that in the report, um, if anyone's had a chance to, to look through it, it, it appears that there were recommendations, um, accessibility recommendations that were made to a couple of schools and it appears they were implemented. So that's pretty much the, the best I can say at this point.
So that report, if I remem- remember, I'll speak or so, it, it captured the work that had been undertaken, whereas that's not gonna happen. If we have a report that's due in June, that's, that's not gonna happen here. Um, so.
And unfortunately, that was pretty much the latest report that I was able to find in the archives. So for any work that may have taken place in the preceding years, unfortunately, I mean, I wasn't able to find that information.
Sure. So I will just say, um, cause I was part of the Board Policy seventeen hundred Subcommittee. So you will see some language in there, just a heads up. Um, discussing having the board itself, D I A B, having flexibility with when they issue a report, like rather than being ad- adhering to like strict uh, timeframe, we want the work that we put in and the time we put in to be productive and worthwhile for everyone. Um, so that's just a, a little sneak preview of what you, one of the recommendations you'll see regarding flexibility. Cause like we've spent the last, I mean, every meeting kind of up until now, everyone kind of just getting comfortable and learning more about D I A B itself. So having flexibility with, um, the timing on when that report will be issued, um, I think is kind of critical. But you all can read it yourselves and decide.
Thank you, Ms. Byrne. Um, Ms. Vickery?
You know, I actually forgot, cause I was taking notes. I'm sorry. It's, it's okay.
No worries, no worries. Um, any additional feedback related to the twenty twenty, the twenty twelve report? All right, hearing none. Um, six point two, twenty twenty-five annual report. As you all are aware, per Board Policy seventeen hundred, which governs this Advisory Board, it states, D I A B shall report annually to the board, providing information on the following issues, as well as other related issues which may arise during the course of the Advisory Board's work, along with any recommendations to address compliance matters. Implementation of board policies regarding access for individuals with disabilities at all Prince George's County Public School System Facilities, to the extent feasible, proposed new school construction and employment and hiring issues. As we near the final two scheduled meetings, prior to submitting the report to the board, it is imperative that we initiate a preliminary plan to organize details. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. So I, I guess the, if I had to react to this, um, Ms. Brown, hate to put you on the spot. We really need to know whether or not we are going to be required to report out. I think it would be in our best interest, and when I say our, I mean in the district, that since this board has just been reinstituted, that, you know, you guys give us a little flexibility with reporting out. I'm sure every Subcommittee here wants to make sure that, um, we've had the time to really assess all of the, the dialogue that happens and we wanna turn over a, a good recommendation report. Um, so it's really gonna be dependent upon what you, it, it ain't really dependent upon. We will do the best that we can, but ideally, um, we, we need to know if we need to report out by June.
Um, so there was never, I mean, according to the board policy, it really doesn't give a specific date, doesn't give a specific time. If you all are requesting to speak out in May or requesting to speak out in June per the policy, that's something, of course, that I've, I've already addressed to the Chair and the Vice Chair, um, cause they primarily work with the Board, um, Director who was at, um, who's Acting Director right now, Cindy, um, on the agenda items. So if you all are saying, hey, we have our information, we wanna give a report in May, we, I've, from my understanding, they just have to have the information ahead of time. But I presented it to them as per the board policy, they need to be able to have an opportunity to present. Um, and so if that means for this calendar year, yes. So for May and June, I would recommend it, um, that would, I would highly recommend just so that even with the new board members like myself, could just always get used to the fact that duh, you know, D I A B is gonna come back and they're gonna give a report and we should be prepared for it and get all the recommendations and understanding. And so I don't want it to be, and, and forgive me if I'm pushing you. and, and forgive me if I'm pushing you all to just do something, but I do want it to be habitual. And, and for people to understand like, no, this is what the policy says and we're gonna go with the policy and this is what we're gonna do moving forward. Again, it is completely up to you all. I'm here to support, um, but I wanted to make sure that I, that I put that out there as well.
Well, thank you for stating that. So members, you know, how, how do you all feel in light of this information? Ms. Blackwell?
Um, first I'd like to um, thank Ms. Brown for making clarification about reporting out. Um, I think it is important for us to say something to try to get some things in place, that we feel that it's important to be addressed. Um, so the board could see where we stand as a co- as a committee, to see how we're trying to improve things within the county.
Thanks, Ms. Blackwell. Any other feedback? Miss Aidee?
Um, I was just gonna echo Board Member Brown's um, statement. I think too, it will present a good look to the board members and to the district that a committee that has been inactive for so long is finally taking action now. So I think that would present a good look for you guys, if you guys can present out this year. And this will also provide the district, um, with insights of what is happening and what action they need to take on their end.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bowman?
Now I was just gonna add, if there's, uh, for example, a subcommittee that may not have recommendations that goes forward, but even information sharing could be included in the report. Um, and I think we may also find that there may be gaps that the committee members may think that we have, that we've already addressed. Um, through our internal processes and procedures and that may come up as we continue to report out, um, and get information from our different subjectmatic experts across the district.
Thank you. Ms. Doyle?
Thanks, um. I, I, I understand the pros and cons of presenting in May. Um, if we do need to present, I just hope our day requests can be prioritized. Cause our recommendations are going to be better if we have the correct information behind them.
Thank you. Ms. Byrne?
Um, I, I appreciate the idea of having us be in the n- not even in the forefront, but just some appearance with the board such that it becomes cyclical. Um, however, it's, it's April, it's April and we've been meeting since, what is it, November? And we're still kind of, we're, we're, I don't know that we have, um, collected information on this, uh. I, I don't know, we could do some, like a perfunctory type of introduction, say who we are, who we intend to be. Um, but uh, yeah, I'm, I don't wanna present and take up space and time as well of board members unless we actually have um, something substantive or at least recommendations that we're gonna talk about fulfilling and moving farther. I will say of the other subcommittees, they seem to be, um, you seem to have gotten a bit farther or maybe we just chewed off too much. I don't know. Um, so if that's the case, that the other two subcommittees feel more comfortable moving forward, I will certainly go along with the majority, um. But I would, my, my gut says to, um, I mean, we're, we're still in information gathering. I know that there are requests outstanding that we have not received information back on. Um, so I'd be hesitant to say what exactly we're gonna do when we don't have that information just yet.
Thank you, Ms. Byrne. Ms. Vickery?
Um, I concur with Ms. Byrne, but I also, um, I want to say that there are some recommendations from this Policy seventeen hundred Subcommittee that I think, um, specifically around board, DIAB Board Membership timelines, that I think can be reported out to the board, um, like you, just to highlight, there's recommendations of having staggered board appointments. So that, you know, there's always a um, institutional or historical knowledge on the board and you're not losing everything and starting from fresh every time. Um, and so I think kinda listening tonight to everyone's um, presentation, all of the subcommittee presentations. I think there's some meat there, not a lot, but I think there's something we can bring to the board to present to them. I know that um, Ms. Adeline said that we couldn't have our policy, um, voted on or approved or things like that. But I think there's something there, right? There's something there we can bring to them, again, just to say, hey, this is who we are. I'm sorry, there's a small coworker tapping my shoulder, um, to say who we are, what we're here to do. And then as well as like just small things, right? The staggered appointments, um, kinda the dashboard Ms. Bowman talked about. Um, some, okay, there's another coworker yelling in the garage. That's all. I will go because they're home now.
Thank you, Ms. Vickery. I, I think you, we, we got the meat of what you were stating. Um, Ms. Byrne, give me a second. Let me get Ms. Payne. Okay.
Yeah, I was going to, uh, I, I'm agreeing with Ms. Vickery. I think there's something for us to present. Um, you know, to include the work that's been done thus far to establish the committee and what our intent is. But I also think we've had some things that we could, could share. And I think if we could present in June, that way we can prepare in May for that presentation. Um, so that it's meaningful.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. Ms. Dorsey?
Yes, I, I was just gonna say the same thing. I, um, I do see the benefit of, of presenting. Um, but I was gonna ask, did, if we could be, is it possible to present in June? Cause that would give us, you know, May to get everything that we could do together. But I, that's what my uh, suggestion was, or my question was.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Brown, just real quick, is June the last um, board meeting of the school year?
Uh, let me double check because I have a lot of things on my calendar, so bear with me.
Okay, okay, no problem. Ms., Ms. Vickery?
I'm sorry, um. Yeah, I'm, I'm in the board calendar now.
We got two more meetings in June.
Yes, so the last one is going to be, um, it looks like June twenty-sixth. Okay, it's the last full board meeting.
Okay, great. Uh, um, Ms. Vickery?
I would just wanted to um, clarify, I don't think we have to have a report, you guys, you know, like, not a full report, but just like uh, introductory statement, you know, like just a small, one pager, two pager, like we're not, we're not gonna build out a whole report just yet. Just, hi, this is who we are, these are the districts we're from. These, these are some of the things we're looking at, some high level overviews, highlights, boom, 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 hit them real hard. We're out the door in twenty minutes, if that.
We may not get twenty minutes, we might get five minutes.
We might get three minutes, but hey, you know, something like, this is who we are. And even a document that could just be added in, right? Cause you know, you get what, two minutes to talk? So, yeah. So just thinking like that, Ms. Byrne, I think that's what you were going towards, like a full report. No, high level overview, one pager, two pager, boom, we're done.
Ms. Vickery? You know what, I think, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, Shereen, I need you, I need you in my life. I need you more in my life. There we go.
Well, well, Ms. Byrne, I was actually gonna say, I think I hear the lead to gather this document. Will be Ms. Vickery. Share the wealth.
I did, I think she just said.
I don't, I don't know, cause the school board, y'all don't have AI. I use a lot of AI at work. It helps me out a lot. I dump a bunch of data in there. I tell it what I want it to do and it makes it pretty. Well, look, if, if that works, just then it goes over to Ms. Blackwell, we all good. Alright, Ms. Blackwell?
Um, I do agree. Just to let them know what we, uh, what we doing and what we, um, what the committees are trying to do and what we trying to accomplish, just to give them an idea. And what things we are, have already looked into.
Okay. Mm-hmm. So the, from what I'm hearing, the consensus is, um, Ms., Ms. Brown, that you would go back on our behalf to try to see if we could report out at the last June board meeting?
On vice chair, I'm sorry, I believe we have to make a motion and second so that the, um, the entire committee could vote on it. Or no?
So I actually need some clarity. I, I don't know, cause I, I, I feel like if, I feel like we will be making a motion on information that we don't, that's not concrete just yet. Cause we don't know if we can report out in June or if the expectation is to report out in June. So I was, I think I really wanted to see if Ms. Brown could go back and see if it's doable. Ms. Brown?
Yeah, so um, I uh, initially requested May, but I also did a follow-up and said, you know, based on just some of the recommendation, if June is um, more appropriate and possible, please have that in mind as well. So we only got two months. So if they're like, hey, you can't do June, but we can do May, you know, at least that'll give us a month. Um, and so like she said, so I, we do have a board meeting, so we have a work session on Thursday, so I will definitely follow up with the Board Chair as well as the Vice Chair in person. Um, making sure that they did give my email and seeing if that's an opportunity. Um, but yes, everything is in the tracker. I also um, CC'd uh, Ms. Adeline, uh, and Tia on there as well. And so they're, they're aware and they support the people who are on that email as well, so they can kind of remind um, as well. So I got your back.
Great, thank you. So Ms. Vickery, are you, okay, if we, alright, thank you, thank you, thank you. Is there any more discussion about the annual report? Alright, hearing none. So we are coming to the conclusion of our meeting this evening. Um, I do just wanna ask again, is there any additional information that we need to submit to Ms. Brown as it relates to data? We currently have a data request from the um, the Employment and Hiring Subcommittee. There is going to be a data request from Board Policy seventeen hundred Subcommittee. Um, Ms. Bowman, you may have access to your, your data, the data. But is, do you know if the new school construction and accessibility of buildings and facilities will have a data request?
As of right now, there are some questions that are asked, that do you have data requests built into those questions? Which I am turning over to the relevant offices to obtain it.
Okay, great. Alright, so, um, Ms. Bone, Ms. Brown, there'll be some follow-up, probably specifically from me. Um, and then if there's any questions, you know, just, just let me know. But um, I think I just wanna try to facilitate getting the information to um, our subgroups, especially in light of trying to prepare for the report.
And just for situational awareness, um, the administration is pretty good at responding. So um, when a board member sends a request, because it does go through a tracking system, and so they do have a limited time to respond that way. And so, um, if it's, you know, we're, we're constantly getting emails back from what was in the actual tracker. And it, it's, it's a really good way to kinda allow people to um, answer things in an orderly time and also to be held accountable, right? I was telling um, Chanel that I was like, oh, I just can call people and she's like, nope, put her on the tracker, you know, and I'm just like, oh yeah, it does work. So the tracker is much better rather than just having these emails go everywhere, these phone calls go everywhere, these texts go everywhere. Um, and so just know that once you send it to me, I shoot it up uh, immediately and then they get a, they get a alert right away um, to respond to it. So, yes.
Right, great. That, that sounds fabulous. Alright guys, well, I thank you all for bearing with me, um, getting through this evening. Again, I was, I tried to adapt quickly, so I think it worked out. Um, so we about to adjourn the meeting. The Chair informs the public that the next virtual Disability Issues Advisory Board meeting will be on May twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Please continue to check the Prince George's County Board of Education's website for meeting information and updates. Thank you all for great discussion and attendance. To the viewers, thank you all for watching. There being no further business, the time is now seven sixteen PM and the April eighth, twenty twenty-five Disability Issues Advisory Board meeting is adjourned. Good night, thank you.